Good morning.
Good morning.
How do you make holiday?
Good. Yeah, well.
It's Tim up there.
Yeah.
Tim, did they make? Did you say it was a change of meeting?
It was the annual meeting.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, good turnout.
Good morning, it's Nikki from the controller's office.
Morning Nikki. Who joined us?
Hi, this is Peppermint. On behalf of the Lehigh County Authority, Suzanne Stopper with Penn College and Chris Kenyon on behalf of the Lehigh County Authority.
Good morning.
Well, good morning.
We're live? Okay, Mr. Mayor Vito on the phone?
Yes, I am.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you.
And Solicitor there?
Yes, sir. Good morning.
Good morning. Okay, ask you to please rise for prayer and pledge allegiance. Dear heavenly Father, we gather this morning to ask you for your guidance in our meeting. In your word, you instruct us to trust in you with all our hearts and not to lean on our own understanding. We are to submit to you in all our ways and you'll make our paths straight. Those who guard their lips preserve their lives, but those who speak rashly will come to ruins. We ask you to guide our words, thoughts, and deeds. You will do far more than we ask or can imagine. Guide us in the tasks you have given us in order to fulfill your purpose. Continue to pray for an end to this virus. We are thankful that numbers have declined. We ask you to continue to heal all those afflicted and comfort the ones who have suffered loss. We pray for hope with a new attitude of unity as we move forward. These things we pray in your name, amen. We will convene the commissioner's public meeting at this time and ask for approval in the minutes of the previous meeting. So moved.
Second.
All fair side?
Aye.
Aye, so carry. Public comment on agenda items only at this time. Hearing none and move on to the bids openings.
Nikki Gottschall, opening bids for the copier equipment and full service maintenance and repair project.
Yes, we received four bids. One was from Top Copy Products, one's from Higher Information Group, one is from Marco Holdings who we currently have a contract with, and the last one is Doing Better Business. These are multi-line bids, so Maya will be reviewing them and making a recommendation for approval.
Okay.
One moment.
Yeah.
Mr. Solicitor, is it okay to open bids outside of the public meeting? Or should they be here?
I'm sorry, I only heard part of that. Will you repeat the question, please?
Is it, is it all right to open the bids outside of the public meeting? Instead of in front of it? Okay.
Yes. As a matter of fact, it's not the practice of every place to open the bids at a public meeting as long as they're opened in a setting where there is appropriate control, so to speak.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. Moving on to action three.
3.0 Accounts Payable Cash Requirements Report with Nikki Gottschall.
Commissioners, the cash requirement report is just over $476,000 this week. Did you have any questions about it?
I have no questions.
Mr. Mayor Vito?
I have a question.
Okay.
I have a question, thank you.
No motion except the payable cash requirement, cash requirements summary?
I'll move to approve.
I'll second.
All fair side?
Aye.
Aye, so carry.
And then 3.2 with Nikki Gottschall, this is the, you're voting on the tabled item from last week, NMS Labs.
Yes, there were some questions last week from Commissioner Masara. Those questions answered? Commissioner, okay. I have a motion to accept that item. So moved.
I'll move to second.
All fair side?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, so carry.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you.
4.0 with the Personnel Actions with Roxanne.
Yes. We moved the podium so that people can see.
Morning Commissioners.
You just identify your name and what department you're in.
Roxanne Greco, Director of Human Resources.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioners, we're asking you to approve at RMS in Operations, Jason K. Kitchen as a full-time replacement gas technician, paid rate five, $15.37 an hour effective March 1, 2021.
Okay, any questions or comments? Hearing none can have a motion to accept the employee action.
I'll move to approve.
I'll second that.
All fair side?
Aye.
Aye, so carry.
There are good things happening over the landfill as far as extra wells being dug and pumps putting into the gathering lines so that we create a lot more gas to be put into the generator and then make a profit off there.
Thank you.
Thank you. We reset the commissioner's public meeting at this time and during the Tefra hearing.
Anne Peppermint is on the line regarding the hearing on Resolution 2021-02 for a plan of financing and undertaking of a project for the benefit of the Pennsylvania College of Technology. Anne?
Well, good morning once again.
Good morning, Anne.
The Pennsylvania College of Technology has approached the Lehigh County Authority with a request to issue on its behalf tax exempt bonds, the purpose of which would be to refund the 2011 bond issue of the college to achieve the benefit of a lower interest rate. There is no new money in this project, there is no new construction. It is simply a refunding of an existing bond issue. I have with me today Suzanne Stopper, who is Chief Financial Officer at the college, and she's here available to give you a brief synopsis of it and answer any questions related to the college. So at this point, I'm going to turn it over to Suzanne.
Good morning. Really, it is as Anne described, it is just a refunding. We have savings that we can incur a net present value of about 17%, so it's definitely something that will benefit the college.
Okay, thank you Suzanne.
I just asked Suzanne, the dollar amount of the savings is in the range of $6 million.
Oh, that's great.
Are there any questions? Are there Suzanne or myself?
Commissioner.
I have no questions.
Okay.
Commissioner Mayor Vito on the line. But I think it's great that you folks were able to do this. Thank you.
Okay, can I have a motion then with no further discussion on the Resolution 2021, two, zero-two?
I'll move to approve the resolution number 2021-02 for the refunding.
I'll second the motion.
All fair side?
Aye.
Aye, so carry.
So we'll reconvene the commissioner's public meeting and move on to the action items.
And thank you very much for your assistance with this project, it's much appreciated.
You're very welcome. Thank you, have a good day to both of you ladies.
Action items, Maya Toon has 6.1 through 6.3. Maya?
Yep, good morning Commissioners.
Good morning.
The first item I have is to vote on the purchase of tasers and accessories for county departments. This is the 2021 taser purchase for adult probation, prison, sheriff's office, and the district attorney's office, and that's in the amount of $44,872.65. I would like to note that this is a 2021 budgeted item for all departments, and we would, I was actually able to work with the departments and taser, which is known as Axon, for a five-year purchase program to reduce our overall costs. So I was able to lock in 2020 costs over the five-year period. Typically, taser costs increase anywhere between 4% to 5% each year. So with this plan, not only do we lock in pricing, but it also includes cartridges as well as extended warranties and additional items as needed.
Maya, what's the lifespan of a cartridge sitting on the shelf?
Typically, from what I understand, it's five years, I believe.
Okay, and again, these tasers are necessary, it's very important on the level of force spectrum that as you are greeted with someone who is not in compliance, that you don't have to go to deadly force. You go from a chemical spray to a taser and then to the deadly force, a tool that can be utilized to help apprehend individuals who are not cooperating with law enforcement.
I guess my other question would be, how many, how many of the tasers or cartridges, because we purchase a lot of cartridges, are never used?
That is something that we have to talk to individual departments. I just know that when you purchase a taser, you're required to have a cartridge, because it's a requirement, and like I said, the shelf life on the cartridges are five years. So you're required, just kind of like a bullet process to rotate those out as required.
True.
But I, you know, like prison, you know, they utilize theirs a lot, so that basically anyone that has a taser, they do use them because there's training, and I'm sure Commissioner Mesker can attest to that as well. You know, that stuff that's done internally amongst departments through the prison, they conduct the training.
Commissioner, there is a annual training requirement for each officer to fire the taser, so there is one taser cartridge that is utilized in training annually.
Okay, any other discussion on this action item? Hearing none can have a motion to accept.
I'll move to approve.
I'll second.
All fair side?
Aye.
Aye, so carry.
The next item I have is an amendment to agreement with BACD Engineering to include service rates for an engineering technician. In their previous proposal that they did for the engineering services for the small bridge funding project, they just, an error forgot to include this rate. However, it does not increase the overall project cost, it was just something with an oversight.
No motion to accept.
I'll move to approve.
I'll second it.
All fair side?
Aye.
Aye, so carry.
And my last item is a professional and administrative service agreement with CEDOC to administer and disperse the COVID-19 hospitality industry recovery program grant fund on behalf of the county. The contract cannot exceed $35,300, and CEDOC will be charging $300 per reviewed and approved application, which is, as you know, $200 less per application than the maximum allowable amount under the grant.
You know, this morning I read an email from Rose, and they were talking about.
Do you want to identify who Rose is?
Oh, I'm sorry, she's from CEDOC?
Yes.
And I believe this may have to be amended, because they are required to disperse the funds as well, which she was not anticipating. So the county, Maya, correct me if I'm wrong.
Yeah, no, you are correct, and this was kind of what I cautioned, you know, late last Friday, when I got some information coming down from the state that made me question whether or not we were really going to have our hands really doing like we did the last time where we actually dispersed the grants. And in my talking with Krista Moeller, I raised that question to her on Friday, and she said that they were going to dig a little deeper, and unfortunately, it's come to light that that's exactly what's going to happen. So unfortunately, you know, we're going to have to have an amendment to this agreement because the agreement was done, because we have to have it done on such a tight timeline to have a contract in place per the grant agreement. But there will be an event of coming out to specifically address the dispersment of funds, and we're still trying to get it ironed out because now the question is, is that we know that CEDOC will have to disperse the grant checks, but do we do that individually as they approved, or do we just upfront them the entire 1.2 million and then they just draw down from the funds in their own account? So that's another step in the review process, and I talked to Krista Moeller about that yesterday, and Rose was going to try to seek additional clarification from Lisa from CCAP.
Okay, so.
So once they have that information, then a formalized amendment will come forward.
I guess my one, my question to the Solicitor would be, because this agreement must be turned in before, what, March 1st?
March 1st, yes.
March 1st.
Okay. Can, did they have enough time to redo the agreement, or can we pass this agreement on a contingency basis, or not contingency, but knowing that we will amend it?
So Commissioner, my understanding from your question is whether there will be time for a formal approval of the amendment. Maybe to be safe, Commissioner, you can approve the amendment subject to legal review and analysis, and that gives you an out, and then if there's time, it could be presented to you next week before the 3rd, and you will still have time to act on it in a detailed manner.
Okay.
You know, this Commissioner Mayor Vito, yeah, I think that we should, and this may be what the Solicitor's saying, we should, I think we should approve it with language in it that deals with the dispersment, because DCD might find that to be a material defect in the application or something, I don't know, but I, we certainly wouldn't want them to reject it, and I'll certainly be happy to move to approve it with, subject to legal review, with the additional language of CEDOC doing the dispersment. Maya, the one question I had was, do you think CEDOC is going to be looking for more money since they're going to have to be doing more work, and should we be prepared to change that?
I'm, I can't speak on their behalf, however, when I talked with Kristin, you know, ultimately the ideal situation would be is that, you know, once we get the 1.2 million dollars, then we just pass through that entire fund to them, and then it's there and they draw down and, you know, submit as needed. The grant itself doesn't really state that that's part of the cost process that, you know, CEDOC can charge us for. The cost that they're looking at is strictly just to review and approve the applications, and essentially, the review and approve applications part kind of goes hand in hand with the dispersment. So personally, I don't feel like that's going to be an issue. When I talked with Kristin, it was strictly just modifying the language to include that so that if, you know, we were completely covered under the grant, there was no talks about increasing the cost overall, because, you know, like I said, our hope, and what I asked Kristin to do to propose to CCAP and DCD, is that we can just give them the entire 1.2 million, like I said, and they can just do it internally from a drawdown process as they review and approve the application.
Okay.
But I was, you know, in talking with them, there's absolutely no way that they're going to be able to, you know, redo a new professional services agreement to encompass this new language, so it was, you know, urge that we approve this and just know that they'll want, we'll have an amendment, because unfortunately, we're still waiting to just get answers from DCD.
I'm 99% sure.
And they can't do a formal amendment until, you know, they know all the information.
I'm 99% sure that after reading that email, that there will be an additional charge. I don't think it will be significant, but nonetheless, over and above this disagreement here. And, and I will add that they're providing this service for the county at a very, very reasonable charge.
Yes, yes, because the, Shannon cheered with us, Shannon Rosman of the Plaine Department cheered with us the other day, the, just for the paperwork behind this application and the red tape that they have to sort through is very time consuming. As she was reading from the documents, she was showing us the documents, how involved they are.
Okay, well, I'll move to approve, understanding that it is subject to legal review and a possible amendment.
I'll second that.
Any all fair side?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, so carry. And Maya, I want to thank you and your team, also the Plaine Department. The public doesn't know is, we were notified about this on a Tuesday evening, and we had until that Thursday to get our application in. So we had a 36-hour turnaround, and we were not going to let 1.2 million dollars evaporate for opportunities for our businesses, our hospitality businesses in Lehigh County, and have that money go to other counties. So our team here stuffed up the plate and got all the work done, and with the help of CEDOC, we're going to make this happen. So thank you, Maya. Thanks for bringing that up.
Yeah, thank you, Commissioner.
Thanks for bringing that up. And by the way, it is a significant grant to those that want to apply, and it ranges anywhere from $5,000 to $50,000.
Correct.
And obviously, we know some of our hotels, you know, have a negative income of over $2, $3 million. That's substantial, so.
Okay, thank you for pointing that out.
Well, actually, Commissioner, maybe we should, if Maya can just give us what the definition of hospitality is for those, so that we can get this out to the public. It's obviously the hotels, is it bars, restaurants?
Yep, anything that you would think where you're serving the public and providing, you know, a service to them, a luxury service, they would be, and we're, and to be honest, you know, that is part of the clarification as well that CEDOC is getting to from the state, because unfortunately, in the grant, it's used as a very generic term, so we're trying to get, you know, hone in on exactly what that definition is, and obviously, that would be incorporated into the application process too. But everything that you said, Commissioner Mayor Vito, is accurate from our standpoint.
Several deadlines to remember in this is March 1st is our next process date that we have to have things in by, and then March 15th is when it actually opens for businesses to apply, and then that window closes June 15th, and those monies have to be in those businesses' hands by July 31st. They have to actually be, the checks have to be in those, those hands by July 31st. So it's, something's quickly moving and it's very fluid from day to day. Thank you, Maya.
Yep, you're very welcome.
Thanks, Laura.
Okay, 6.4 Nikki Gottschall on the discussion of payment of the 2021 actuarially determined employer contribution.
Yes, Commissioners, we talked at the retirement board meeting, and there was a motion and it got approved to keep the ADEC payments in cash when we transfer the money over. So I'm just confirming that you want to do this on a monthly basis?
Nikki, this is Commissioner Mayor Vito.
Yes.
You know, I'm having trouble recollecting, and maybe Commissioner Mesker can help me. There was a retirement board meeting where we, I think, changed from the yearly payment to monthly.
Yeah, it was last, last August.
Last August?
Yeah.
That's correct, but it needs to also be done in a commissioner meeting because that money comes from the general fund.
Oh, correct, okay, thank you. So that's what you're seeking today? You're seeking both clarification that we, that we want to do it monthly and clarification that we want to keep it in cash?
Correct.
Two of both, okay.
I need one more clarification, though. Cash as in a holding position with our manager or in a, an account set aside in our own general fund?
I think it was supposed to be in the retirement fund in, in a, like a cash reserve account, something, a cash position in the retirement fund. That's the way I took our conversation last week.
That is also how I took that conversation.
In other words, we still would be making the ADEC contribution to the fund, we just would be putting it in a cash position, as opposed to distributing and purchasing securities or other bonds and stocks, et cetera.
Correct.
I'm not sure if this is the appropriate place to discuss this.
It has to be approved at a commissioner's meeting, an ADEC payment.
That's correct, but in that ADEC payment, there were a number of discussions, and one was investing in the stock market that we may feel is, is overvalued, and the other is withdrawing, not withdrawing, moving and taking a profit and setting it into a cash position and using that as withdrawals for the, for the people on the pension versus leaving it all into the stock market and keeping it at risk.
Right, but I'm strictly talking about the county's ADEC.
I understand.
Well, maybe.
It was also mentioned that we don't, don't contribute and set that money aside in, in cash into, into the, into the general fund, so that we, if something happens here with the economy or the state decides not to give us money, our, our fund is, you know, I would say it's 100% funded, I, I don't know any other number that would, you could argue that, but the question is, is, is now the time to take the taxpayers' money and fund this, fund this pension, with it being in a great position? We are in one of the best positions in the nation, okay? And the uncertainty of not, not just the market, but, but what the state and federal governments are going to do has me concerned with the taxpayers' money, you know? So I think I explained my position well enough for everyone to understand, and you can carry on with the vote if you want.
Mr. Chairman, can we just sort out a couple things? One would be the, how we want to pay it, whether we want to pay it monthly or whether we, you know, as, in the August meeting last year, I guess that was the recommendation for the pension, or some other way? And then separately, the, the issue that Commissioner Masara's raising on the, on the money, I guess we have to sort of reconvene ourselves as to what we meant last week.
My recommendation would be that. My recommendation would be that, uh, that we table this one more week and we have a further discussion amongst the three of us, um, about how we want to move forward, whether it be monthly or yearly. Um, our recommendation by the, by the, uh, financial people was to do it monthly, which I, I'm tending to lean towards. And then the amount of the ADAC, um, per month, I think that's Commissioner Messer's question of the amount and, and what fund that would be held in because he raises some very legit concerns about an overvalued market and a new administration, how that's gonna play out in the next year.
So I'll move, I'll move to table the discussion and allow us to reconvene.
Okay.
I'll second that motion.
All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, and it'll give us an opportunity this week to, uh, make a final decision on this moving forward and then we'll put it on the agenda for next week.
And I, I just want the retirees to understand that it, it's not about, uh, funding it, okay? I believe that that's our responsibility, okay? It's when and how much. And, uh, it's not just about, this is still taxpayers' money. And, um, if we have to set up a list of priorities in this coming year or 2022, um, I think we'll have a better grip of, you know, the whole economy here within the next six months and, uh, we're, we'll lead us. So I would be fearful of investing, uh, those dollars. And I believe it's, what's that? Two, close to two million? One point seven?
One point seven.
It's one point seven million.
One point seven.
And, and, you know, this is a combination of taxpayer money and employees' money. And we, we have a great responsibility to make sure those monies are invested properly and that we don't, we don't lose. This, this, um, this fund has done tremendously and is one of the best funds in the nation according to our, our, uh, financial people. And it's been because we have followed their, their outline of how to do it. Um, if the state would have followed that same outline, I think the state wouldn't be in the situation they're in. But, uh, we, we have done the opposite and done an excellent job of, of listening to our, our consultants. And, uh, again, it's a combination of, of taxpayers' money, employees' money, and we want to do the, the right thing to make sure that if the market does turn around and goes south, uh, we're not losing everybody's money because it's our responsibility to do the right thing.
I will clarify this. Uh, we are responsible for the taxpayers' and the employees' money. But the ADAC is not the employees' money. It is the taxpayers' contribution.
That's true, the ADAC part, payment is part of that.
Okay.
You know, so, so, we'll have this discussion this week and, and make a final decision next week. Okay, thank you.
Six point five, Scott Conkle, voting on agreement with MCM Consulting Group.
Morning, Scott.
Good morning, Commissioners. Um, this is Beth. I'm actually in Scott's place this morning. Um, the agreement that you have, I know there was an issue last week. I listened to the, the meeting and I, I think maybe where, where things went wrong was the misunderstanding that this is not additional funds. This was, um, 2020 capital budget rollover into 2021, which was the remaining sixty-two thousand nine hundred nineteen dollars and ninety-six cents that we still had outstanding to MCM, um, from phase two of our original contract, um, with MCM. Normally, we paid them in monthly installments. We had four monthly installments remaining. However, with our, um, contract running out the end of January and the project not being completed because of all of the delays over the last couple of years, um, we were extending our contract for thirteen months with MCM to ensure that this project was completed. They did not ask for new funds for that extension. All we were simply doing was dividing that sixty-two nine nineteen ninety-six out over 2021 into twelve monthly payments of fifty-two forty-three thirty-three instead of four payments of the fifteen seven twenty-nine seventy-five. So it is the same amount of money. It is the money that I rolled over from the 2020 capital budget into the 2021 capital budget to finish paying off the original agreement with MCM.
This is Commissioner Maravito. Did, did you see that the email I sent about the contract amount?
Yes, correct. I did, and I reviewed the, the contract, Commissioner. Um, and you're correct, they didn't go out to RFP on that portion of the contract. Um, however, we did have multiple meetings with different vendors and things to look at their products, um, at the Hampton Inn, as a matter of fact, here in Loyal Socks. Um, we, we reviewed multiple options. Um, we are, our previous system, our, our system that we're working on now that is out of life as of now anyway, um, was a Motorola system. So, you know, anything that we were going to purchase needed to interface with our current Motorola system for anything that didn't need to be replaced. So whenever we were looking, of course Motorola was definitely of interest to us and the, the, I, I don't want to say it's a deal, but the, the offer that Motorola made us there at the end of the, the year that was a rush deal, the one that you were not in agreement with, um, from the previous Board of Commissioners, um, saved us a considerable amount of money. I tried to locate those emails. I was not in the position that I am in now at that time. I went back and tried to locate the emails to get the exact dollar amount of those savings. I could not locate them and I apologize. I wish I had those numbers in front of me. But I know it was a, a large amount of money that signing that contract in a hurry did save us. Um, I want to say it was an additional ten or twelve percent on top of the state contract prices. Um, so no, it didn't go out for RFP, but I, I do believe that, that there was due diligence done to get us the best prices through Motorola that we could possibly get. And MCM has done a, you know, they do a lot of work with this project. I can tell you, I'm on conference calls multiple times a week with them if I have any issues with anything. Um, you call them and they're there. I, I am not in, I'm not gonna say a difficult person to work with, but, um, you know, like in your email, you said it's hard to hold people's feet to the fire. I truly have no issue doing that. If I have a problem with someone that we're working with, if I don't take care of it myself, MCM takes care of it for me. So, um, I, I really do feel like they are doing the work that they're supposed to do and now they're going to be doing it for an extra thirteen months. And they're not asking for anything extra from the county for that thirteen months.
Well, so I wasn't, I wasn't opining on the Motorola contract. That's not an issue here. In other words, whether it was a good deal or a bad deal is immaterial. What I'm simply focused on is the fact that MCM was hired as a consultant to perform certain work for the county. I have the contract in front of me. I'm looking at, the contract was consisting of phase one was for twelve months. It was taking a hun, it was gonna be paid about a hundred and eighty-nine thousand and phase two was gonna take sixteen months and be paid two hundred and fifty-two thousand roughly.
Correct.
So altogether, the consultant was getting paid almost half a million dollars, four hundred and forty thousand, or they are being paid. That's how much the county taxpayers have been paying.
That's right.
So phase one had three parts to it. It had planning, coordination, it had acquisition, it had funding. So if you look at the contract, planning and acquisition is about one and a half pages of tasks, detailed tasks that they have to do, verify, develop, et cetera.
Uh huh.
Phase two is acquisition. Under phase one, I'm sorry, part two is acquisition. That's almost two full pages. That's the part that's the RFP. And then the third one is the funding. And the funding is actually about half a page, maybe a little more than half a page. So my point is that phase one, they were paid a hundred and eighty-eight thousand. They didn't do two pages worth of tasks, right? MCM will develop a request for RFP for statement of work with all technical specs. MCM will work with the purchasing department to develop the RFP. MCM will participate in pre-bid events. MCM will prepare scripts and templates. MCM will, MCM will coordinate with the vendors. This was coordination with the vendors needed for an evaluation committee. In other words, if an RFP was done and there were submissions, they would do it. It's different from the, the project, the, uh, items they showed. MCM will assist in the preparation of addenda, participate in contract negotiations, system procurement. So it goes on and on. And we had a meeting on January, not my notes from January sixteenth, twenty nineteen, with Commissioners McKernan, Messer, and Maravito and two constituents, Jeff Smith and Jack Rupert, the solicitor was there, Mike Wiley.
Uh huh.
The MCM representative, Mike McGrady, told us that he would do an analysis of work performed in phase one to see where he could reduce the contract cost. So what I was simply saying last week and what I reiterated in the email is that we should be saying to him, okay, you acknowledged that you didn't do the RFP, we paid you to do the RFP, in your estimation, and then we can negotiate with him, in your estimation, how much money should you be giving back to the county because you didn't perform work under the contract? So it isn't a question, when, when I said in the email, I understand that one works with a vendor, a consultant every day, it's not easy to hold their feet to the fire. What I meant by that was that we have to be able to go to a, a vendor, and I'm sure that you realize this from all the years you've had with the county, and say to them, hey, you didn't do this work, you owe us money. I mean, it's no different than if someone came to our house and, as I said last week, was gonna tell you to do, they were gonna do three things and they only did two. You would say, well, I don't expect to pay for that, what I didn't do. I don't think Mike, I mean, Mike wouldn't have said that in the meeting if he didn't acknowledge that he didn't do it. You know, he acknowledged that he didn't do the work in the meeting. He knows that that's not, and he, he told us that he would do an analysis. I think we should do our own separate analysis and figure out how much time would have gone into doing that, preparing an RFP and so forth. So that, that's my point about this issue is that we should be, do some money back and I think that should go in an amendment to the contract.
The Commissioners, uh, may I offer, uh, a legal analysis? I, I, Commissioner Maravito was correct that, uh, the documents talk about in RFPs. They also talk in the alternative about a statement of work, which I understand to be a different thing. So I, I don't know factually, uh, but I suspect that the department can comment on it, whether a statement of work or an equivalent to that was developed in lieu of an RFP. That's a fact-based question. So I, I can't answer the fact-based question about whether a statement of work or an equivalent was prepared, but if that did occur, then I think the issue about contracts forming is, is sort of answered.
You know, you know, and I, I can't answer definitively, but I can tell you that during the meeting, um, he indicated to us that he had to do some negotiation to get the proposal that he got from, um, from Motorola. And we, we acknowledged that. But notwithstanding that, he, he did say to us, you know, I can go back and see how this can be adjusted. Um, so he must recognize, I guess, that he didn't do an RFP and that there was probably some savings that's due to the county. You know, some of this may have slipped between the cracks because we had a change in administration, so to speak, between the, the years, as you referred to, Ms. Baylor. We, you know, there were changes over at, at the, uh, at the highest level of DPS and so I, I understand those things happen. I think now that we have an amendment that's being done, we ought to try to resolve this question and see, and try to incorporate that into the amendment.
Okay, I can speak with Mr. McGrady and, and see where it will go from here. Um...
So you haven't spoken to him yet about this?
No, I did not speak with him from last week to this week. I did not. It was my understand, I wanted to clarify that this was not new money because me going, I, I apologize that I wasn't at the meeting last week. I was in training. But I, I needed to hear the, the meeting myself. I played it back on YouTube and I felt like the biggest concern was really that this was new money, which it's not. It was budgeted money rolled over from last year. I do understand where you think him not doing the RFP is an issue. However, I'm also looking at the opposite end of the spectrum now where we're a, a year plus behind on a project that he's going to continue, continue to do consulting until this project is finished, tested, and live, you know, through our sign-off that, that is another fourteen to fifteen months out that he wasn't planning on being here for. So I, you know, I can imagine we're, we're going to get pushed back on that as well and he's asking for no additional dollars. So, I mean, I, I, we can have that conversation, yeah.
Commissioner, what's...
Why is it a year behind for fifteen months? Is it due to COVID?
Um, some of it was COVID, yes. Some of it is land acquisition. I, it is very difficult with the cell phone companies trolling into people and saying, we'll pay you, uh, two thousand dollars a month. When I talk to people and I'll pay them five hundred to a thousand and maybe fifteen hundred if it's a site that we're really desperate for, a year, not a month. Um, you know, public safety radio doesn't make money and cell phone towers do. So, you know, people are used to now, hey, my neighbor has a tower and they make two grand a month off of it and you folks want to give me five hundred a year or a thousand a year and they're not interested. So it's very, this project has been the most difficult, you know, twenty years ago, they were happy to do that because, hey, there, there wasn't cell phone towers around twenty years ago. But now with all the towers that are around, it's very difficult to get land.
But it's not due, there's nothing in being behind due to our failure to take action or do something?
Oh, no, absolutely not. It's just been a process. The, the majority of it has been the, the land issues, getting the sites that we need. No, the, the equipment's ready to go, Motorola's ready to go, um, Keystone's ready to go with installation. We have all of our propagation studies knowing where we need to get the land. MCM has supplied us with everything. It's just getting the land.
Commissioner.
Right.
Commissioner, what's your thoughts on us moving out on this? We, we're past the, uh, agreement deadline, which was, uh, January thirty-first. So we're operating without an agreement. Uh, it is a, a, something that we need to have done quickly, uh, moving forward. We're already behind on it. Uh, if we agree to the agreement and, uh, it's not costing us any additional money, uh, we can go ahead and move forward with this. At the same time, Beth can speak to, uh, MCM about, um, whether they'd be willing to, um, renegotiate, uh, you know, payback of, of things maybe they felt that, like you stated back on January ninth of two thousand nineteen, uh, he said he would look into it and, uh, but it's kind of like, I think it's two separate issues where we can move ahead on this. At the same time, Beth can look into that without, without holding this up.
I think, I think that we, we should move ahead with this and, and, uh, then he gives the department time to work with him on, on finding out what he owes us. I, I really do believe he owes us some money. How much it is, is, is open to negotiation between us, but I'm, I'm fine moving ahead with this today.
Okay, sounds, sounds good. Okay, with that said, then can I have a motion?
I'll move to approve the MCM contract.
I'll second.
All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, so Carrie.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Yeah, thank you, Beth.
Thank you, Beth. I appreciate you, you, you following up on that. And I understand the confusion about the new money, thinking it was new money.
Thank you, Beth. I definitely wanted to clarify that because it, you know, definitely said that I didn't want confused.
Right.
And I would like to add that, um, I do recall that meeting and I do recall that question you asked him, Commissioner. Um, it just leads me to this statement here is that when, when we're dealing with a large contract amount, and this was a large contract amount, and I heard Beth say, and we had to do it in a hurry, that's not something you want to do in a hurry. But the, the problem that we had was, it was a significant savings, okay? It was in the millions. So, uh, that is the reason. I don't believe you voted for that, Commissioner, but, but here's my point, is that Commissioner Maravito saw that that was in the, uh, uh, cost and it wasn't completed. And, uh, he does his due diligence when he's looking at large contracts and that is our job. And he does his due diligence when he's looking at large contracts, and that is our job. And Beth, I do want you to go back to Mike, because I remember him putting his head down when Commissioner Maravito got that. And he says, yeah, I'll see what I can do. But we did not, we did not get anything out of that. So I want to thank you for doing your due diligence, Commissioner, and hopefully, Beth, you can, you know, I don't know what the amount would be, if it would be in the thousands or whatnot, but at least we should ask.
And I'll agree that Beth is very good at holding people's feet to the fire, and I'm sure she'll follow up on this.
Yes, Beth, I don't want you to take my sentence wrong, okay? I know that you work 24/7 for the county at DPS. I know you live and breathe it, and I appreciate that, that you, you know, are, especially where you're running, the part that you're running in. So I didn't, I don't want it to be taken that way. And that, by the way, that sentence wasn't just, that sentence was for me too. It was a reminder to myself that I have to do that, you know, to all of us, for all of us. So don't take it as some personal thing, okay?
Yes, sir.
And Beth was not in the role she's in now at the time of the contract?
Right. I was in that meeting as well. I did, I was invited to that meeting, and I was in that meeting as well. I know exactly what meeting he's talking about. So I will speak with Mr. McGrady.
But you weren't the director at the time.
I was not. I was simply there as a, hey, come sit in this meeting.
Yep.
Right.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Have a good day.
Thanks, Beth.
You too.
Yep, thanks, Beth.
Okay, 6.6, Jenny Pacchiano, voting on sub-recipient agreement with Southland Sport Borough.
Where are you, Jenny?
Hi, it's actually Kristen from Zidacov.
Oh, hi, Kristen.
That's one of the multiple Kristen. This is an agreement between the county and Southland Sport Borough for the 2019 CBG funding. This is, this is an entitlement allocation that runs through the county, but the state designates the specific amount. And this is for $87,716.
Okay, any questions or comments? Harry, now can I have a motion?
I'll move to approve.
I'll second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, so Carrie.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you, Kristen.
Thank you.
Thank you.
6.7, John Lavelle, vote on MOU with Loyalsock Township pertaining to an FMA buyout grant.
Good morning, Commissioner.
Where are you, John?
So this is pretty, pretty simple and straightforward.
Excuse me a second, John, could you identify which department you're with?
Oh, I'm sorry. John Lavelle, Deputy Director for the Planning Department.
Great, thank you.
This MOU is between the county and Loyalsock Township, and it's for a FMA grant, which is scope to purchase one property in Warrensville Road. Basically, the agreement lays out that the county will manage the project and all the grant responsibilities, and that the township will accept the property, allow the county to utilize their solicitors for closing, and then provide any relevant information if requested by the grant agency.
Okay, any questions on this MOU?
So, John, this is Commissioner Maravito. Is this, is this program different than the other FEMA buyout program?
Yes. So it's a
I thought it had kind of gotten away from the buyout, that's why I was asking.
Oh, no. Even Loyalsock Township themselves were
No, no, the, this is a flood mitigation assistance grant program. Is this a FEMA program?
It is a FEMA program. There's a host of different grant programs that they've kind of combined into one, but they still kind of utilize, depending on what source of funding, they still utilize a certain name, like FMA, HMGP. HMGP is a post-disaster grant. FMA is a kind of your normal operating grant that you would get for housing mitigation.
Okay.
It varies.
Was this initiated by Loyalsock Township?
The grant itself?
Yeah, the request for the grant.
The grant was, participation was actually requested, I believe, by the homeowner, but Loyalsock Township has to give us the green light to go ahead and pursue the grant before we do it. So we do it all in coordination with the township.
All right, the reason I'm asking is because sometimes constituents will say, hey, I saw in the paper where somebody's property was purchased, bought out, and, you know, will the county do that? And the important point is that the local municipality has to agree to go along with it, right?
That's, yeah, that's a huge part of it. Obviously, there's a bunch of eligibility criteria with grants like this, depending where the property is, its relative risk based on the floodplain mapping, things like that. Thank you.
Okay, any other questions? Here, you now can have a motion to accept.
I'll move to approve.
I'll second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, so Carrie.
That'd be appreciated.
Thank you.
6.8, Director McDermott, voting on Resolution 2021-03.
Commissioners, I'll be seeking your approval on two separate resolutions. The first one, 2021-03, is simply an appointment of an assistant solicitor, Elizabeth A. White, at the rate of $100 per hour effective on January.
Any questions or discussion? Here, you now can have a motion.
I'll move to approve.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, so Carrie.
And the second resolution, Commissioners, is 2021-04. This is the resolution that we amended from 2010, which the amendment allows the Commissioners to extend for one year the terms of the members on the Lycum County Planning Commission in the event of urgent circumstances.
Any questions or discussion?
What is the 2010-11 resolution vague?
Commissioner, the 2010-11 resolution stated members shall not serve in excess of two consecutive four-year terms.
Okay.
And then the addition says, provided, however, that the term of any other board member may be appointed for one additional one-year term in the event of urgent circumstances as determined by the Commissioners.
Okay. So I was a little confused because I, the reason I had sent the email asking who specifically wanted to have their term extended is because I thought the resolution that we were doing was gonna just say, the following people shall have their, their terms extended for one year. This is due to COVID-19. On the planning commission, because we know not everybody wanted it extended, this sort of gives authority to future boards commissioners, which, I don't know, I guess the term urgent circumstances is a little vague, but I'm wondering if there's any concern of my colleagues about just doing this year's listing the names of the people who want it, or whether they feel that it's necessary to, you know, change the way it's done.
I look at it, it gives, it gives some additional power to the Commissioners in case there is an emergency or a declaration. And I don't believe this will be something that future boards of Commissioners will take advantage of and give them an extra term or two. I just don't see that happening. I believe 2020 was definitely an odd year.
And if I might, this is the Solicitor, because this was a resolution of a past Board of Commissioners, it's not necessarily binding either on this Board or on any future Board. So as Commissioner Masari says, it is up to the discretion of future Boards to not abuse this, but by definition, they're allowed to change it, to remove it if they wanted to.
Yes, they could create their own resolution if they chose to, correct Solicitor?
Absolutely correct, sir.
Yeah. Okay. All right, I'm fine with doing that then. I think that we realized that it was necessary to do something with people with this COVID, so.
Okay. Stating that, can I have a motion?
I'll move to approve.
I'll second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Aye, so Carrie.
6.10, Jerry Kennedy, vote on on-base licensing renewal for Pathonatary's office.
Morning, Jerry. Can you identify your name and your department?
Morning, Commissioners. Jerry Kennedy, I'm Director of Information Services. Before you this morning is a budgeted item, a renewal for software and service of $11,249.9 for our software, part of our software package in the Pathonatary's office. This is an annual and budgeted expense.
Okay. Any questions or comments? Here, you now can have a motion.
I'll move to approve.
I'll second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
So Carrie, thank you, Jerry.
Mr. Chairman, one quick question. Jerry, this is software that'll allow them to actually not have to pull up or go get physically separate documents, right?
Hang on one second, may I just lay back to the podium? Okay.
Yes, sir. This is currently in use for the civil side of the House. There's an effort underway to improve their software, but yes, this is the backend package that allows them to scan the documents and maintain digital copies.
Yeah, so for the public to understand, it means that if somebody, if a judge is hearing a civil case, he literally on his computer cannot pull up these documents from the Pathonatary's office without this software, right? He has to go physically get, they have to physically get the document.
That is correct.
Correct, Jerry?
Yes, that is correct.
Yeah, so this will allow them, you can obviously see how it's gonna move court proceedings along faster and minimize the amount of paper going back and forth in the building. Okay, thank you.
Finally, 6.11 and 6.12, Jason Yorts from RMS.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Where are you, Jason?
Commissioners, for your first approval, 5.12 is the LCMS participation in the Annual Pickup Pennsylvania Keep America Beautiful event. So every year, I come before the Board of Commissioners and ask for the Board of Commissioners to participate from usually April 1st to April 30th, as it is this year, and allow free disposal to any nonprofit or organization that sets themselves up for special collections to beautify the central PA area. We did not hold this event last year. I showed no tonnage collected. In 2019, it was only .1 tons. 2018 was .39 tons, and in 2017, we did have five tons, five and three-quarter tons. This event is an event where DEP will waive the six-and-a-quarter-dollar fees for tipping. Brady Township also, as the host municipality, participates and waives their fee of the dollar and uses Board of Commissioners and allows to receive the waste for free. This is just typically small amounts that any organization that wishes to participate can and brings it in to us for free disposal. In order to participate in this event, they must get ahold of the Keep a Pickup Pennsylvania, it's called. There's, there'll be contact information where they can log in and they'll get a number, and then that number will be sent to us. That way, we can put it in and we know that they're participating in the event.
Okay. Any comments or questions? I have a motion to accept.
I'll move to approve.
I'll second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, so Carrie.
Commissioners, the next item is for the total rebuild of our 836K compactor. This machine started service in 2000, the end of 2015 for RMS. This is going to, it's up for a total rebuild. New, a machine costs 1.2 million. The rebuild right now, the basic package is at $404,000. Let's see here, 404, yeah, 404, 637. And then the remaining list brings it a total of $489,191.76. That's the amount that I'm bringing before you. Not all those items on the list may need replaced, but as they have the machine torn apart, we will need to be able to do that. When this machine is returned to RMS, it will come back with a warranty, 36-month, 5,000-hour warranty. The machine will give us another 10,000 hours of life. So basically, the machine will be, will have around, when it's finished, in another four, four and a half years, we'll have 20,000 hours on that compactor, which is a pretty long time on the life of the machine. So it is a budgeted item. We do identify it every so many years that we need to send a machine out, or purchase new. We do our due diligence through our business department to identify which is the best option, whether to purchase new or to rebuild. This machine, having not been rebuilt once, is up for rebuild and would be the financially sound decision, since we will be able to get another four, four and a half years out of a machine for basic half the price. So I am seeking your approval.
Okay, any questions?
I'll move to approve.
I'll second it.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. So Carrie.
Commissioners.
Commissioners, I appreciate that. If you would allow me one quick second of your time, I would like to make an announcement. There will be a media release sent out today. The Lycum County recycling drop-off sites, there will be several of them that are upgraded with new boxes. The wooden steps that have been a problem throughout the county, the wooden steps will be removed at the remaining sites. The boxes that will be put down will have new openings. Some folks have found it frustrating, but we need to make the understand, the public to understand that we need to have a control on the materials. We can't keep taking in big bags of plastic bags or of garbage. We need them to do their due diligence and help this program out, take the plastics out of the material, out of the bag, put them in the holes. Same with the cardboard. Cardboard must be broken down. If we can't fill them boxes, we're not getting a good full container to bring back, and we're losing the efficiencies of the recycling program. So there will be a media release coming out, a statement today, there'll be pictures. Anybody who wants to see it, they can go to the Williamsport Bus Garage site, Loyalsock, Matoresville, all of them will be getting new openings for the plastic boxes and so forth. So I appreciate your time, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Can I just comment a second?
Yeah.
You know, it's important for the public to understand what Mr. Yorts just said, because the efficiency of the landfill running is money in the taxpayer's pocket. We know that each year, the landfill puts about 1.9 million or so into the general fund. Do I have that correct, Mr. Yorts?
Yes, sir.
And I think we calculated, there was a calculation done for us over the last 10 years, that's put in close to $20 million?
That's correct.
So that means the taxpayers in this county have not had to come up with $20 million to run the prison, to do the APO, to do the planning department, to do all the things that the county does because of the ability of the landfill, where much of the waste comes from outside the county, but some of it comes from inside the county. So the, to the extent that we are more efficient in our disposal of waste and they can do their job efficiently, it helps them put more money into the county's general fund. So I think it does relate to all of us in just more than a way of being a good, you know, a good citizen in terms of recycling. It also is in the pocketbook, so I just wanted to make that clear to folks.
Thank you, sir.
And Jason, we don't make money on recycling. What we do is save on the space and our landfill.
That is correct. We do save for every ton of materials that we're able to keep out of the recycling, or out of the landfill and put through the center, recycling center, gives us a significant amount of airspace. That's, you're looking at around a cubic yard of airspace. So it is, it is vital that we don't fill it up with cardboard. There's no need to put plastic milk jugs in containers or cardboard or tin and aluminum in the landfill. There's no need for it. There's plenty of other nasty stuff to go in the landfill. Get the recycling out and save airspace and prolong the life of the landfill.
And so for the people that have come to me to say they didn't approve of the change of the, the containers or whatnot, we're doing it for our community, for our society as a whole. Yes, it will be a little bit more work to take the plastic bottles out of the bag and put them through that opening. But you have to remember that there's a cost associated with dumping recycling into your waste. And we, we hope that you will continue to recycle and keep this momentum because I see only in the future, I, I hope to see that it rebounds.
Absolutely. We all do, sir. I appreciate the time, Commissioners.
You're very, very welcome.
Commissioner, comment?
Chairman? Mr. Maribito?
Oh, no, I have nothing.
Okay, I have two things I'd just like to go over. First of all, through this past year and into this year, the county has been, continued to remain open. We've done so safely. And this year, we have sat together, the three of us, and, and developed a, a set of goals moving forward to assist our county leadership in what direction the Commissioners would like to go. And we've narrowed that down to nine categories, nine goals. We'll be listing our top five here in the very near future. But our strategic goals are, first of all, to advance the financial health of the county. And how we go about doing that would be developing quarterly budget reviews. We're looking at a strategic management, planning program moving forward. And ultimately, ways of, of keeping our healthcare costs down with the implementation, implementation of a health clinic moving forward. We're discussing that. The next thing is we're going to invest in our human capital by updating county policies, which would include a succession plan that we're looking at doing, scrubbing the old policies, updating our performance evaluations, continuing to work on employee morale. And those are some of the things we'll be looking at. The next up goal, a big one, is to get the right-sized county facility footprint. And that would be, we're all looking at selling Executive Plaza, consolidating into our other structures. We're completing the magistrate's office. We're going to be examining and evaluating the Sharwell lease and locating structures for more entities under one roof, hopefully. One being the corner, which would be a, a big project that's been long overdue to, to work on, is to find a corner or home. The next goal would be leverage and increase outside agency and alternative funding sources. And that's how we would go about that through the Strategic Management Planning Program Phase Two. The next one would be improve public safety. And that would be looking at the security at the magistrate's offices, looking at the vaccines throughout the county, trying to get more vaccines to the public by working with our partners with UPMC, UPMC and Geisner and the other entities in the county to try to, to get through more vaccines to the public. The next will be invest in our economic development. We're in a process right now finalizing a sales agreement with Digger's Specialties, which will bring one hundred fifty jobs on the other side of the mountain. We're excited about that. And then continue to develop and market the remaining land over Timber Run Industrial Park. Also, it's important to keep the workforce here. We have colleges that are, are educating our students and then that workforce leaves. And as a major problem in the workforce is having skilled labors. We hear this from the employers over and over and over, that we need more skilled labors. And to identify a way to keep those labors in Lycoming County. And then to continue to identify and assist growth quarters in the county. And that's a way we can do that is by helping infrastructure and other ways that we can come to the table with the chamber, other elected officials, the colleges on development of that. We found out through our first EIP study that the prison and the courts are two big expenses. We understand that. They're necessities that we have to live with and they do their best to keep expenses down. We'll continue to meet with the courts and the prison on prevention programs, treatment, alternatives, and different ways we can avoid incarceration when, when appropriate. And the last two would be improve the quality of life for our residents. And that'd be through the, through things such as white deer golf, the arts, the theater, our gardens, our parks, ways we can enhance the quality of life for our residents. And then lastly, through anything that the pandemic has taught us, it has been that we have to start to really focus on regionalization. We understand the tax bill is getting larger, our population has, has shrunk. There's people out of work, they cannot afford tax increases. So we need to come together to work together to regionalize through partnerships so that we can provide services to our constituents at the same cost or a lower cost by thinking outside the box and coming together that way. So these are the nine things we'll be looking at going forward as the Board of Commissioners. Some are very short-term, some are a little longer term. But we're excited about this, this platform and format moving forward. The other thing I'd like to knowledge, last week, we talked about an eight-year-old who's pretty special in the community. Noah, I want to tell you about another eight-year-old, it's pretty special that I just heard about, Giovanni. Giovanni is an eight-year-old that through the efforts of his mom, saw how the restaurants were suffering in our area. So what he did is he went out and raised money for tips. And he was able to do a GoFundMe tip fund. And he was, his favorite restaurant's up in Newbury. And he was able to raise one thousand dollars for, of tips for those workers. And as he walked into that restaurant to give them the thousand dollars, they were overwhelmed with enthusiasm and, and excitement. That little eight-year-old would think of him. The owner would not accept the tips on behalf of her. She said, we'll take them on behalf of our employees. Well, he didn't want to leave the owner out. He found that the owner's favorite food was bacon. So he brought her back some bacon to make sure she was included too. So to have these young kids like this thinking of community and not themselves and go, foregoing birthday parties for, for causes, it's incredible to have these kind of youth in our, in our, in our own backyards. But hats off to Giovanni for, for doing this, for a local restaurant. You know, when you are out eating, please remember that these people have been out of work and to try to leave them a generous tip if, if you're able to because they've suffered tremendously through this, this pandemic and as, as well as the restaurants. And we look to continue to try to keep them operating and open because they are the backbone of our community along with the rest of the small businesses.
I'm going to add to that. One, one of the things that really impressed me as a Commissioner and, and I'm so grateful for is that we meet a tremendous amount of youth in our communities. And sometimes, you know, they're being made fun of, you know, being a millennial and whatnot. But there are so many children and, and young adults, high school adults, that are brilliant. And they spend their time in their communities, in the key clubs. And we get an opportunity to see that as Commissioners where a lot of the general public does not. And, and to add on to your goals, objectives as far as the health of our, our community. Well, the quality of health also is improved by our nonprofits that are in this community. And we have, we have some of the best nonprofits that I've seen throughout this state. They're dedicated into helping the people that are in need. And twenty twenty was very difficult on them as well. So supporting those nonprofits by participating, paving in any, any kind of events that can help them raise money or awareness is deeply appreciated.
Yes, and as we look forward to twenty twenty-one, we talked about the golf course briefly. The nonprofits, the golf course is able to provide the environment where three to four hundred thousand dollars come into the nonprofits through golf charities and, and tournaments they're able to have over there. But as I spoke to Chamber this morning at their annual breakfast and I shared with them what the county has provided in relief. And you mentioned the nonprofits, we've, we've provided one point five million dollars to forty-six nonprofits, which is substantial out of the COVID monies we've received. So nonprofits are very, very big. And another thing with the economic growth is we continue to, to look and speak with our airport officials. Moving forward, we've, we've talked to state federal officials about what's going on at the airport. We know we need reliable air service and that's not taking place right now. And we're looking at alternatives. We've been engaged in some pretty, I believe fruitful conversations moving forward. And hopefully, they'll materialize when there's some good news coming out of the airport in the near future. So that's another thing that brings quality of life. That airport serves, it's a regional airport. It serves five hundred thousand people. And it serves two major medical facilities, one being the largest in the state of Pennsylvania, UPMC. And it serves seven financial schools, or, I mean, educational schools, which is Bucknell and, and being one of them, Lycoming College, Penn College, there's seven of them. If you look on their website, they're all within a half-hour driving distance. That lists our airport as the main route of transportation when it comes to the air. So it, it, it's vital that we get a quality airline in here that can service our community. So we continue to work on that also.
You know, to follow up on the goals and objectives, we had each set down our goals and objectives and, of course, many of them overlap, maybe using different language to get across the same, the same concept that Commissioner Masur then read the list of. And, and so the public understands many of these transcend from one term to another. Frankly, a lot of the things that I had on my list were things that we also had pursued in the earlier four years. For example, getting the healthcare costs under control has been a perpetual process because healthcare consumes such a large part of our budget that's non-reimbursed by either state or federal funds. Getting healthcare costs under control is key to getting one, you know, to getting the budget. And, and we've, we've worked both the prior term and the prior term before I was there, when Commissioner was there, Messer was there, his first term, and they, they did consulting with, with a healthcare consultant who's actually been, been around for about thirteen years now that I think about it. But, you know, the, each, each Board of Commissioners hopefully tries to build on what the prior boards did and learn from the mistakes and learn from the victories or the, I should say, the, the things that, that boards are able to do that are positive. So, you know, I think we view this as a continuation of, of that work. And of course, new things arise. This, this whole idea of trying to put the corner and the central processing and the magistrate under one roof is, is somewhat new and, well, I should say it's new, it's been discussed. Maybe not all the consolidation, but, so anyway, it is, it is exciting that we try to continue to, to build on these things and hopefully, we leave something for the next board that they also can, can build on. One of the things, and in some ways, maybe these meetings being live streamed, especially if they're being kept, is good is that it's very hard for us as Commissioners to find history. You know, why did us Board of Commissioners ten years ago do X, Y, and Z? It's different than at the state and federal level where there's a record, a literal record of the trans, a transcript of what goes on when the legislature meets. And you can read the legislative history where senators or representatives will say why they're voting or seeking to do something. So our minutes tend to be somewhat more, we voted, you know, to approve this or not approve it. But it's, but it's important if we maintain these recordings that we're doing so that people can understand why we were trying to consolidate these services or why we went to a self-funded health plan. So hopefully, we can continue to do that too as we develop these goals and objectives.
Okay, thank you. For the comment this time, we have any?
M.C. Green says, thank you for moving the podium to enable us to see the presenter. And then she, M.C. Green says, has anyone planned for the energy needs of the county in the event of a catastrophic, or catastrophe similar to the one that occurred recently in Texas due to the reliance of windmills and the new green deal?
Can I just make a comment there? There's an interesting, you really, it's really important to understand what happened in Texas. I won't go into a long explanation, but if you read some of the, you know, Texas does not export electricity. So it's not subject to the federal regulations about pricing electricity. So it's actually more complicated, Ms. Green, than simply the windmills. It has to do with the energy, the entities that produce it not being winterized. And there's no regulation that they be winterized. There's a total reliance on the market. And so many of the companies didn't winterize the, the facilities that create electricity because they didn't think that it was worth the money to spend on it. I don't know, you know, they, they made their decision, the fact is they didn't do it. So that's part of what, that is probably the major part of what led to this. And I think they're probably going to make some changes to that because people are getting hit with huge electric bills now. You know, for the four days. It's amazing, it was seventy degrees yesterday in Dallas, right?
Yeah. Well, I sent, response to your question, to answer it, we have a very good EMA system here. I have complete confidence that backup generators and everything they have in place that they have, they have thought outside the box and every, you know, they, they have exercises that they do for basically any kind of emergency out there. They, they're very creative with some of the emergencies they come up with and they'll take a day and, and, and role-play these emergencies and then test their systems to make sure they're working. And so they're constantly going through training and making sure that we're safe and that these systems don't fail under any kind of catastrophe because we've already had several in this county over the years and they're very good at responding to them.
Well, and also, is the solicitor still on the phone?
Yes.
Yeah, the utilities here are, I mean, the electric generating entities in this state are public utilities, right?
Correct.
So they're subject to the Public Utility Act, which protects the public through certain regulatory requirements on them. For example, they have to be able to produce electricity in cold and heat in all circumstances.
No, no question about it. The regulation in, in this Commonwealth and most of the jurisdictions in the United States is different from what occurred in Texas where my understanding is that whatever regulation exists is on a statewide level, not a federal, without any federal intervention. And it's also more privatized, if you will, in terms of what obligations exist on providers.
Right.
That's correct. Okay, thank you for the questions. And our meeting's adjourned, we've completed the agenda. And our next meeting will be on Tuesday, March second, two thousand twenty-one, right here in this room at ten AM. Everybody have a good day.
Thank you.
Thank you. Here we are.